Okay. This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed tonight or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And I would just ask right now if you would please turn your cell phones off if you have not already done so. Actually, I'm going to do that because I don't think I have. And we really appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También los quiero compartir que todas las conferencias está disponible en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue descargada es disponible para todos. Por favor apagar su teléfono celular y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartir con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. We, as the Board of Trustees, are held by a code of ethics. One of the code of ethics that we are held by is integrity of character. So we, as the board, will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. We will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. We will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed. And Renee, you said there's no public comment? Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to item number three, our moment of silence. If you would bow your heads with me for prayer, contemplation, or meditation. Thank you. And pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our pledge leader this evening is Leanne Sanchez-Lio of GW Carver Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the board would meet me in front of the dais, please.
We would now like to thank our GW Carver student, Leanne Sanchez-Lio, for leading our pledge this evening. Leanne loves science and enjoys playing soccer, singing in the school choir, being a cheerleader, and serving as one of the school's student ambassadors. Leanne is also active in the 4-H program, and she plans to become a psychiatrist or therapist when she grows up. Thank you so much to Leanne, and we also have the GW Carver principal Denise Wooden with us this evening, supporting her student. Thank you so much, Ms. Wooden. We're now going to recognize our students and staff for some of their amazing achievements. Waco ISD had 40, that's right, 40 high school students qualified for the Texas Association of Future Educators Conference, with 21 advancing to the National Educators Rising Conference in Washington, DC. We are so proud of them and would like to recognize these incredible future teachers. We're going to begin with our University High School. Jesús de La Garza qualified for both the state and the national competition. He qualified in teacher-created materials, elementary level, Jenga review, and public service announcement, teacher recruitment. Our next honoree is Jerah Hisa Jimenez. She qualified for both the state and the national competition in teacher-created materials, Our next honoree is Alexis Villa-Gomez. She competed at the state level and advanced to the national competition in public service announcement, teacher recruitment, and earned a bronze medal in the Education Language Fundamentals Test. Our next honoree is Diana Montoya. She advanced to the national competition after winning state. She competed in the public service announcement, teacher recruitment category. Winning the Judge's Choice Award is Mariano Romero, who competed in the Interactive Bulletin Board Elementary category at the national competition. Michelle Ponce also won a Judge's Choice Award. Michelle competed in the Interactive Bulletin Board Elementary category. Our next honoree is Rihanna Chambers, who also won a Judge's Choice Award for Inside Our Schools: Bear the Service Dog. Winning the Judge's Choice Award at the national competition is Niaeli Villa for Ethical Dilemma Also winning a Judge's Choice Award at the national competition is Frankie DeLeon in the category of Ethical Dilemma. Capturing a Judge's Choice Award, also in Ethical Dilemma, is Isayla Martinez. Sandra Saucedo captured a Judge's Choice Award in the children's literature pre-K Spanish category, and this young lady captured a gold medal in the JV Project Visualize fundraising Could we ask their advisors to please come into this photo, if the advisors would please come into the photo, please? We would like to recognize our high school Taffy Advisors, Dead in English of University High School, and Kalen Tally of Waco High School, as well as Kathleen Knight, the Dean of the Future Educators Academy, and Career and Technical Education Director Lisa Saxinian, and Assistant Director James Stewart, for ensuring the success of our students. Thank you also to Waco High Principal James Alexander and University High School Principal Alonso McAdoo for being here this evening to support your students. I'm sorry. We are now ready to recognize our next honoree. Please welcome Crestview Elementary Librarian Amy Taylor. Mrs. Taylor is selected as one of only 75 coordinators across the United States for the National Children's Book Council Favorites Program. Publishers send Crestview their most recently published books for teachers and students to read and rate, and then data from all coordinators is combined to create the favorites list each spring, which librarians use to decide which books to purchase for their collections for the coming school year. So Crestview students and staff will have a huge role in influencing what other students across the country have access to in their libraries. Crestview is receiving approximately 550 books to review, so she'll be busy. Mrs. Taylor is in her 29th year in education and her third year in the library at Crestview. Her principal is Nancy Alvarado, who is also here with us this evening. Congratulations, Mrs. Taylor. We're now ready to recognize our campuses who earned the No Place for Hate designations. Waco ISD had 20 campuses to earn No Place for Hate distinctions for the 24-25 school year. Since joining the movement in 2021, Waco ISD has doubled the number of schools to earn the distinction. No Place for Hate is a national student-led program, supporting schools in their commitment to celebrate diversity, promote respect for differences, and challenge biases and bullying at all levels. No Place for Hate campuses have a student coalition that works alongside staff to create school-wide activities throughout the year. We now recognize these amazing campuses. We begin with Alta Vista Elementary School. Principal Lindsay Helton, and also receiving the award is Rebecca Maynard. Congratulations, Alta Vista. Also earning the award is Bells Hill Elementary. Receiving the award is Principal Kristi Ingram, and Katie Vanderer-Meer, and Lisa Edwards. Our next campus to earn the No Place for Hate designation is Brook Avenue Elementary. Receiving the award are Principal Jessica Weeks, Assistant Principal Sage, and Carrie Our next campus to honor for this award is Cedar Ridge Elementary School. Erin Langley is the principal, and receiving the award tonight are Troy Volkman, Caitlin Also earning the No Place for Hate designation is Crestview Elementary School. Nancy Alvarado is the principal, and also receiving the award is Stephanie Reed. Dean Highland Elementary also received the No Place for Hate Award. Principal Sharina Hubbard is in the house with Jennifer Maschek receiving the award. Also earning the No Place for Hate designation is Hillcrest Elementary School. Principal Haley Dean receives the award. Also earning a No Place for Hate designation is J.H. Hines Elementary. Receiving the award tonight is Principal Lear Linton. Earning the No Place for Hate designation again this year is Kendrick Elementary School. Receiving the award is Principal Isabel Lozano and Brisa Coronado. Lake Air Elementary School also earned the honor of No Place for Hate. Principal Kristi Yorman is accepting the award. Representing Parkdale Elementary as a No Place for Hate campus is Crystal Collier. Also earning a No Place for Hate designation again this year is Providence Heights Elementary. Principal Courtney Whitaker receives the award along with Angela Leganfield. South Waco Elementary School is also designated again this year as a No Place for Hate campus. Amy Atnip receives the award as the school principal along with Counselor Vanessa Cleary. Bonnie Trammell represents West Avenue Elementary, again designated as a No Place for Hate campus. Also receiving the award with Ms. Trammell is Karen Curtis, the counselor, and Victoria Caesar Chavez Middle School is also a No Place for Hate campus again this year. Principal Lena Ortiz receives the award along with Brittany Eskew, Ronald Fox, Cherie Goodman, Becky Ramirez, Dejean Burns, Lisa Timmy, Brenda Souls, Washi Khan, and Julie If all of our Eagles could gather together for a group photo. Our next campus that we're recognizing as a No Place for Hate designated campus is GW Carver Middle School. Receiving the award tonight is Principal Denise Wooden, Assistant Principal Christopher Baylor, and Christopher McDade. And recognizing the Tennyson Texans as a No Place for Hate campus, Principal Brad McMillan, Crystal Dora, Davina Derrick, Alissa Ainubiarre Dunn. Recognizing University High School as a No Place for Hate campus again this year, Principal Alonso McAdoo receives the award with LaRonda Clark, Courtney Hammond, and Natalie Padron Once again this year, receiving the No Place for Hate designation, Brazos High School, And finally, we recognize the Wiley Opportunity Center. Who earned the No Place for Hate Campus Award, receiving the award is Charisse and Sheila And we are going to gather everyone together in a group photo. And while they're getting in place, we would like to recognize the Waco ISD Student Services Department staff members, Yolanda Williams, Sarah Miller, Julianne Held, and Dr. Rochelle We are now ready to recognize this month's Waco ISD community partner. This month's community partner being recognized is the Waco McLennan County Public Health The Health District has been instrumental in ensuring our students' immunizations are up to date so they are able to attend school and continue their education journeys. With the start of school, the Immunization Clinic has been at capacity every day for the last several weeks. During COVID, Waco ISD and the Health Department work together daily to provide the safest environment possible. Health Department staff are also our point people for all communicable diseases. Thank you for working to keep our students and staff safe and healthy. We're going to call Rhiannon Settles up. She's our Health Services Director in Waco ISD, and she supports the work of the Health Congratulations, Waco McLennan County Public Health District. We appreciate your partnership. Thank you. And trustees, that's all we have this evening.
Let me get myself situated here. It's always fun to see everyone. Okay, moving on, we will move on to item number five, Dr. Kincaid, Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening. I think I should have gone before everyone left because a lot of the credit for what I'm about to talk about goes to all the people on the campuses who really pulled off a great start. So it was a great start, really strong start for the 24-25 school year. And I am just so grateful to all of our department leaders and our campuses, our school leaders, for just implementing such great systems and procedures and processes to make it one of the smoothest first days of school that I've seen. And that was my 35th and final first day of school. So that was a hard one to swallow, but I loved it. I promised Wendy Sled and Ally, forgot Ally's name from KWTX, yes, yes, that I would do one more early morning with her before I retired. And I kept my promise by getting up about 4:15 on the first day of school and meeting her and the students and other media outlets at Tennyson Middle School. I got there about 5:45. I won't brag about that too much because Wendy was already there, Mr. Vedania was already there beating me, and Trustee Ochoa did make it, but I beat him. He was just a little bit later that morning. So it was just so much fun to get to be there with the students, with our kids, athletes, cheerleaders, the band, student leaders, as well as all the staff who assisted that morning. It was a great pep rally for the opening of the school year and the opening of a new school. Media coverage was fantastic, too, with KWTX, KXXV, KCEN, and the Waco Trib, all showcasing our students and their beautiful new campus that day. Want to thank our Principal Bradford McMillan for all the hard work that he put into making sure that the school was ready for the kids. He was really eager to get into that new building, and he got in there early. Gloria's nodding her head, he was there weeks early and wanted it to be perfect, and it was pretty perfect on the first day, so I'm really thankful to him. Also, I want to thank our custodians, and they just do a huge shout-out for their work. That school was clean, and it looked awesome, and Ms. Maria was just smiling and happy. She just loves the new school. One of my favorite moments of that morning at Tennyson was just taking the time to walk a classroom wing with Trustee Ochoa after we finished in the gymnasium and visiting with teachers. There were just so many smiling faces of our teachers, and then the classrooms. I always love doing that every year, just looking at how the teachers decorate their classrooms and set up for the kids, and they were just so prepared, and it was just really nice. But we experienced that same kind of happiness and preparation all across the district, and the first day of school is just always really special. And it was an important day for our kids and our staff, and it was truly a blessing to get to experience it. So with my team, we followed up and celebrated that first few days of school, and we reflected on what that looked like, and also we thought about, as we were celebrating, what we'd been calling our big lifts heading into this school year, all the things that we were working towards, taking over the transportation department, transitioning, transformation Waco. Waco Schools back to Waco ISD, redesigning our credit recovery with the closure of Brazos, changing secondary master schedules, managing a budget deficit, the Big Branding Project, and then the continuation of our bond program. And that was really fun to reflect on, that work and everything that we were able to accomplish going into this school district. We also celebrated the implementation of Parent Square. It wasn't one of my big lifts that I had been talking about in my staff presentations in the spring, but it was on our list the whole time, because we had learned about Parent Square in the fall, and we had decided that we would implement it this school year. And I'm hearing just a lot of positive comments from parents. I don't know if you guys are signed up, some of your parents on the board, it's working, good. But we're getting some good feedback about that, and I just want to take an opportunity to thank Wendy for her hard work. She was working on that, and technology was assisting, and probably some other people as well, but thank you. And I want to encourage all of our parents to use it. If you're not using it, it's a really great communications tool. And you guys might know better than I, because you're using it as a parent.
Yeah, I've already communicated with several of my kids' teachers at all three schools, and heard from good principal announcements right when they, I got the dress code.
There you go.
I should have read it a little closer, but I did get it.
If you get the communication, you should read it. There you go. All right. So just real quickly, before I talk about enrollment, I want to share my favorite first day of school picture with everyone. That was at West Avenue Elementary Kindergarten. You know, I had been at middle school, and I said, "I've got to go see some babies." And I asked them to give me their happy smile, and there it is. Isn't that sweet? And so I want to ask the board if you guys have some favorite moments from the beginning of the school year that you want to share, anyone? I'll have to, but that'd be nice to hear from you guys.
For me, when I dropped off my son at Dean Holland, seeing the basketball players from Waco High, just hyping him up for the first day was a great experience. I appreciate the basketball players and the coaches at Waco High for doing that. It was awesome.
That's really awesome. Great.
I took my son, who's a sophomore in college now, who attended Tennyson, by Tennyson the day before it opened, and he was just overwhelmed, and his words were, "I'm glad they get to use this space." Just all of it. And so that was my, watching the news coverage of them at that school that morning, feeling so much pride, was, made me proud to be connected to that. I mean, it was a hopping place.
That was, that's, we heard that sentiment from parents, from kids. It was really special. What else?
I hate to keep talking about Tennyson, but it is, you mentioned when we were walking, just the joy in all the teachers' faces and the excitement and that the kids had to be in a place like that. It was overwhelming. It was really great to feel that and experience that. And if he's not going to mention it, when we walked to school with trustee Vedania's daughter, she made a comment that we've been discussing a lot. She said, "I can't wait for other schools to come here and see our school." And that was very impactful.
It's important to them, yeah.
I've got a couple former students of mine who are now teachers at Tennyson, and they both went to Tennyson, went to old Tennyson, and so now they're getting to teach in the new Tennyson, and they were just like, "Wow, Mr. Patton, this is high class." And they were excited, and they said that their colleagues on the staff were excited. And it reminds me the same excitement that we had a year ago when we were opening Carver. Carver was a little more hectic opening. We had people moving in the day before the building opened, but it went smoothly, and I think as a district, we learned some lessons and applied that to opening Tennyson. And I think that the kids and the families that are going to these two schools should be very proud of the facilities that they attend.
Great. Well, thank you all for sharing. Okay, enrollment. We had 12,369 students on the first day of school in our classrooms, and today we had 13,398 students. That's about 95 students more than we had on the seventh day of school last year, so we're up, which is really positive. We also expect to continue to grow a little bit more through Labor Day and over the next several weeks as we approach our official count day, P E M Snapshot Day, which is always the last Friday in October.
I was going to use that as my favorite.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't give you enough time.
My favorite, but no, I didn't know if you wanted to deliver that information.
No, you go right ahead.
That was my favorite, was the enrollment number.
Enrollment increase, yes.
Knowing that families are coming to Waco ISD.
Yeah, yeah, it's positive, and it was good news. We watched those numbers closely as they came in on the first day of school, and we followed them every single day just to see. And the other good news related to that is that that is a higher number than we, I believe, have in our budget projections. We have 13,294 in budget projections. So if that holds, that will help us in that way. Of course, we had a few bumps, as you always do with the first day of school, but all in all, it was smooth, no major transportation hiccups, you know, just typical first day of things, but that was really huge for us for having taken over the Transportation Department. So thank you all. That's all I have.
Always good to hear first day of school and that transition into Tennyson. I know teachers were probably itching to get in there probably a month before.
They were wanting in. We were holding them back. Give us a little more time.
I know, I walked in when I, probably like two weeks before, and I thought, Ken Cannon, at least if I was a teacher, I would want to be in my classroom already, like weeks ahead of time, but I'm so thankful that the teachers and administration pulled it off.
We did.
Pulled it off, yeah.
Pulled it off.
So thank you. Ms. Davis, we are going to open it up right now for a public hearing, and Ms. Davis is going to present.
So we're reaching the end here. So as part of our last portion of the budget and tax rate adoption, we have to have a public meeting to discuss the budget and the proposed tax rate. So this is part of, most of what we'll be covering tonight is part of our truth in taxation that we are required by law to do. So the Education Code requires that the superintendent shall prepare or cause to be prepared a budget covering all the proposed expenditures of the district for the following fiscal year. For us, our budget is, we do have a fiscal year that starts September 1 through August 31. A lot of districts are on July 1 through August 31. So we have posted the summary of that proposed budget. That was in your pack, it's last, at our last meeting, and it compares the current year with the prior year's revised budget, and it is on our financial transparency page as required. Under the Texas Property Tax Law, the Texas Constitution, Tax Code, and Education Code all apply to our truth in taxation, which is a little bit different for school districts than it is for cities and counties. And it does require the districts to comply with certain steps in adopting our tax rate. The Texas School District tax rates, like the others, are composed of two parts, our maintenance and operations, which funds, helps fund with our state revenue, most of our regular general operations, and then our INS rate, which funds our voter-approved debt service. Our property tax collections through both of those serve as our local match for our state revenue, and we do also get some state revenue in our debt service fund. Most of that is a hold harmless for those, for the increase in the homestead exemptions. We have, this year, we got about $2.3 million from the state to help offset that increase in the homestead exemption. So this is our proposed tax rate. The maintenance and operations tax rate is .7664. That is the same rate that we adopted last year for maintenance and operations. We are, that is our compressed rate as determined by the state. Our debt service tax is .28254, and that is a little bit higher, about two cents higher than it was last year. That is partially a result of the fact our values did not increase very much in the current year, and then we had, collections were down last year, so we had to increase that a little bit to cover our debt service. The comparison of the maintenance and operations for last year, the proposed budget, there is about half a percent increase in the maintenance and operations budget over last year. There is about 2.9, about .29% increase on debt service. So our total expenditures have only increased about half a percent from last year. So looking then at our appraised values, our total appraised values, you can see there, the current year is about 14.2, just up about $9 million. This is like a sort of much lower increase than what we've seen in the past few years. Our total appraised value of new property was a little bit higher, $249 million compared to $178 million last year. The taxable value of those properties is actually down this year from last year, and that is a factor of those increased homestead exemption. And then the total taxable value of new property, $212 million compared to $169 million last year. The total amount of our outstanding and unpaid bonded indebtedness is $449,280,000. And that is, well, we just made our principal payments. We always make them mid-August, so we've just finished those, and that's what is left at this point. On our comparison of the proposed tax rates with last year's rates, as I said, there is no increase in the maintenance and operations rate. The interest and sinking rate was .262187 last year and .28254 this year. For total tax rate last year was 1.028587. This year, the proposed rate is 1.04894. Now, the rate to maintain the same level that we had last year would have been $1.09. So we are limited to what we can set as a tax rate, so we're only able to set this $1.0489, but to maintain our same level of funding as we had last year, it would have been $1.09. So you could also see those local revenues per student and our state revenue per student. Last year, our local revenue per student was $7,208. This year, it'll be $7,677. For our state revenue was $6,413 last year, so that's gone down. Again, we have that factor when local revenue goes up, state revenue goes down. So our proposed, our state revenue per student will be $6,143. So our average market value of residences last year was $231,937. This year went up about $9,000 to $240,714. Average taxable value from $96,845 to $110,727. Last year's rate versus the proposed rate per hundred dollars of valuation, again, $1.286 last year and $1.0489 this year. So the taxes due on average residence last year was $996.15, and this year is a $1,016146. So the increase in taxes is $165.31. But remember, part of that $165.31, it's not just a rate adjustment. You see, we went from an average taxable value residence of from $96,000 to $110,000. So part of that increase is due to the increase in the average value. So the notice of our voter-approved tax rate, so the highest tax rate that we can adopt before requiring voter approval is that $1.048942, which is what we're at. And if we did adopt a tax rate above that, then the election would be automatically held. Used to, you'd have to call it an election, but now it's automatically held if we adopt a rate in excess of that. So this is just a look at what our property tax rates have been from 2005 to the present. As you can see, they have, we started compression back in 2005. They went down significantly, but we were allowed $1.50 on the MNO side back then, and they compressed to $1.30 and then down to $1.4 in those first few years there. And then we were, we did do a TRE in 2015 that did increase our tax rate a little bit there, brought another 13 cents worth of tax rate into our MNO fund at that point in time. Tax rate compression started, again, the, what we have as maximum compressed tax rate started in 2019 with House Bill 3, and we have been compressed steadily since then. And that is also a factor of those increased homestead exemptions. So in 2023, there was an increased homestead exemption, went to $100,000, and right before that, I think in 2021, we had a $40,000 homestead exemption. It went from $25,000 to $40,000, and now to $100,000. So that's also why you see those going down. We've had increased compression, and the state then is funding our, the difference. Not raising the basic allotment, but funding the difference for that tax rate that we leave. So this is what our official budget looks like. We have three funds that we're required to include in our official budget. That's our general fund. Once again, that funds most of our general operations of our campuses. The Child Nutrition Fund, because our Child Nutrition Fund does not make money, although it kind of does, but it's not supposed to, so it's in the official budget. And our debt service fund is also part of the official budget. Our appropriations for that official budget, general fund is $162,572,669. Our Child Nutrition Fund is $12,325,453, and our debt service fund is $25,996,492. So our total of the official budget is $200,894,614. We also have some operating transfers of $535,000 to fund our day school for the deaf, Guam and Guaca, because we are the physical agents for those funds, and they operate at a loss every year. This is lower than what it has been budgetarily, probably will come in less than that by the end of the year. Our beginning fund balance in the general fund was at $57.5 million. So right now, with an estimated decrease in the fund balance of 8.1, that would bring that ending fund balance down to $49.3 million. We normally do underspend our adopted budget, anywhere from $3 to $5 million. Again, we've had a lot of ESAR funds to, that have offset our expenditures, so we may have a little bit less of an underexpenditure than we have in recent years, but I still expect that we would have several million that we will underspend on that. Child Nutrition Fund, we do have a very high fund balance there of $6.8 million. We are budgeting an $836,000 deficit. We will be in September budgeting some project money and food service to try to bring that down some more, but right now we're looking at an ending fund balance of $5.9 million. And then our debt service fund, with what we have set as a tax rate and what our debt is for next year, we are expecting, we're expecting a 98% collection rate. That's what we based it on, but that would, revenues would equal expenditures in that case. We're starting out with a $3.7 million fund balance, and we'll end with that. Now that is down about a, not quite, I think about $600,000. Now, that is down about a, not quite, I think about $600,000 from what we had last year. So that's another reason we don't want that debt service fund balance to get too low. This just takes a look at the percentage of the official, the 80, 81% of that is our general fund. We have 6% of that in our child nutrition fund, and 13% of that official budget is in the debt service fund. Looking at our revenues for the official budget, 50% of our revenues come from local and intermediate source revenue, property taxes primarily, and interest revenue is probably the other big chunk. State program revenue is 43% of that, and then federal program revenue is 7%. Most of that is in our food service fund, because that's mostly federally funded, since all our kids eat free, and the other piece is in indirect cost, for the most part, in the general fund. So this kind of looks at our major functional areas and what makes up the budget. So our instruction and instructional-related services is 46% of that budget. Instructional school, instructional and school leadership, principal's office, instructional leadership from central office is about 6%. Our student support services, which includes like guidance and counseling, health services, social work services, food services, co-curricular activities, that makes up about 16, and transportation this year is more. That's about 16% of the budget. General administration is only 3% of the budget, and that includes most of our business functions and human resources and those areas. Our non-student support services is 14%. That is maintenance, plant maintenance and operations, security services, and technology. And then community services is 1%, and debt service is 13%. And then our intergovernmental charges, which is basically money that we send to TIF number three for one more year, and then the money that we help support the McClintock County appraisal district. Those are in those intergovernmental charges, 1% of the budget. So this is kind of what our unassigned, unassigned fund balance, what we were looking at a while ago, was our, our total fund balance. This is our unassigned fund balance as a percent of budget. Now, between the total fund balance that we were showing and the unassigned fund balance, and this is general fund, we will take out, there are some things in there that are either unspendable, like inventories, or they're restricted. We still have, we will not have a restriction last year. We have had a restriction for the transformation zone for their fund balances. We won't have that next year, and I'm not going to show that as restricted because they, we have budgeted the cost of those positions that we're going to pay for, for next year. And then the, the other thing is committed funds. So any purchase orders that we have outstanding, we are required to show as a commitment of fund balance. Now, we don't rebudget all of those. A lot, you know, departments and campuses are told in the summer that if they issue purchase orders and they don't come in by August 31, they got to pick it up out of their new budget. Now, we do have some cases, I think I mentioned earlier, that police cars, we had some police cars encumbered. Chief Goodman told me they're supposed to come in next week, so they won't be a carryover. But we do know we have some buses. We had, did hear that our microbuses, our three microbuses, are supposed to come in the first week or two of September. So that, they were supposed to be like two years out, but they're actually coming in faster than our special ed buses, and we're going to get five special ed buses in probably December timeframe. But those things will carry over, and they, they will be not included in that unassigned fund balance. So that brings that down to, from about 32, 33% at the end of this year projected to 25.7% at the end of next year. Again, that's budgeted. Probably will be higher than that, because we'll have some salary savings and, and under expenditures in the budget. So this is what our debt service by series and year looks like. We have debt now going out to 2053. We'll have some of our old debt that we've got from the 2008 election will be paid off as of 2020, no, 2030. We've got a little bit, most of it's paid out by 2029, with a little chunk in 2030. And then we've got some of our new issues that will come in, you see in 2039. That will be strictly this last bond election that we did in 2021, and there's the three issues there that you see. So that's it? Public, if the public has any questions or input?
Does the public have any questions, input, comment? Hold on one second. Okay, I guess not. Okay, yes, Mr. Grant.
I think the increase is going to be about $150 per average household. The increase in value per household is right at like 14%, and the average tax increase is at 15%. So it really is like a 1% increase, where it looks like it's a 13, 14% increase, but the value of the homes have gone up proportionally with that same number, except for 1%. And so I think that's part of the story that's really important to remember. Yes, the taxes are going up, but so is the value of your home, and that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. That's a great point. Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, moving on to item, oh, we'll close the public hearing, and moving on to item number seven, information items and reports. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Mr. Grant, is there anything, any thing you like pulled? Mr. Davis, thank you. I know, I was, for some reason, my husband's name kept coming out, I thought, what is going on?
Oh, boy.
Okay, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No, I just, I think that's 8I. I'd just like to remove myself from voting on that.
Okay, recusing. So we're going to go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. I will pull item 8I, and we will vote on that one separately. Mr. Ochoa, is there any other, any item that you would like pulled?
No.
Mr. Patton, any item you like pulled?
No.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, except for item 8I. Ooh, we'll give it to Mr. Davis, and then we'll give the second for Mr. Ochoa. Any questions, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Ochoa?
No.
Patton?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Item 8I, purchase in excess of 50,000 under pre-existing bid, cooperative, allowed professional service. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya? Any discussion, Mr. Gillery? Oh, you're, he, sorry, Mr. Gillery is recusing himself for this. Thank you, thank you for not saying anything. Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so it passes. Any opposed? Passes with a, all in favor, except a recusal for Mr. Gillery. Okay, item number nine, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding adoption of the budgets for the 2024, '25 fiscal year. Ms. Davis. Actually, you're going to be up here for a little bit, so. Not long, okay.
Last pieces. Okay, so now we need to adopt the budget prior to adopting the tax rate, because we must by law do that first. The budget was pre, we have, again, we just talked about the, the official budget, including the general fund, child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. The budgets were prepared using an ADA estimate of 11,645. Local net taxable property values of 9,237,0137, with 16,486,960 in value under protest. The maintenance and operations tax rate of, is .7664 of $100 of assessed value. The interest and sinking tax rate is at 28,254 per $100 of assessed value. The employees paid on the teacher's schedule will receive an average increase of $600 or 1% for the 2024, '25 school year. That is included in the budget. The average starting salary of the, on the teacher's schedule went from 52,975, WAP in 25 bucks, to $53,000 for our starting salary. There was no general compensation increase for the other employee groups, and, but there are some selected salary or stipends that were adjusted to address market differences or improve pay equity. Now, instead of doing the salary increase, we will be, in next month, we are doing our retention bonuses to all employees out of the remaining ESAR funds, and those will be paid on mid-September, September 13, I think, is payday this month, this year. So the district's monthly contribution to group health insurance, it was increased from $456 to $558.60. That's about a 15% increase overall. That will, because that $558 starts January 1st, it's not for the entire year. That, health insurance has been going, that's the last couple of years, I've averaged an 8.4% in, increase, and we did not increase our rates last year, so that is a two-year increase of, that would, I guess, be about a 7.5% per year. Employee contribution rates will increase, not the employee-only coverage, those, those rates will not increase. We will still, still offer a $0 plan with our high deductible plan with no cost to the employee. But there, some of the rates will go up between 0 and 9.4% depending on the coverage that, and the plan, and possible benefit changes that employees might select. The budget also includes a mandatory benefit increase in contributions to the teacher retirement system. This is about 1% this year. It's been running about 3% ever since 2019 in House Bill 3. This is the final increase of that legislative session, because that was a four-year increase in TRS. So this is last increase, it will require more legislation in order to increase the TRS rate further for future years. They'll probably increase that and not increase the basic allotment. Proposed budgets were developed based on the MNO rate, as I said, a 7.6 in the, 2.8 on the INS rate, for a total tax rate of the $1.04894. This is a 2 cent, 2.0353 increase over the 2003 rate. So included in the budget, this is a little, a paragraph I have to put in there for legal reasons. Included in the budget are the state compensatory funds. The Texas Education Agency allots funds for school districts annually for state compensatory education, and those funds may be used to provide a compensatory intensive or accelerated instruction program that enables students to be performing at grade level at the conclusion of the next regular school term. So SCE is defined in law as programs and/or services designed to supplement the regular education program to directly increase the academic achievement of students identified as at risk or of dropping out of school. The district may not budget funds received from any other purpose until the district adopts a budget to support additional accelerated instruction under the Texas Education Code, Section 42, 152. So the amounts that we are presenting in the general fund for state comp is 11,715,876, and the district is projected to receive 19,498,088 from the state. We are required to spend 55% of that amount on direct program, and so we are in compliance with that requirement. Also in your packet tonight are those budgets we talked about a little bit earlier. We are the fiscal agent for four funds. The Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy, the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, the McClintock County Challenge Academy, and the Regional Day School for the Deaf. So we do, we are required to develop and adopt budgets for those four funds. The McClintock County Challenge Academy met this morning, we had our meeting, our five-minute meeting at 8 o'clock this morning, and adopted the Challenge Academy's budget. So the adoption of the proposed budgets provides funding for the district operations for fiscal year '24, '25. And so the administration recommends that the Board of Trustees consider and approve budgets for the '24, '25 fiscal year, and the following amounts is presented. General fund, 162,572,669. Child nutrition fund, 12,235,453. Debt service fund, 25,996,492. Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy, 1,258,531. Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, 1,318,729. McClintock County Challenge Academy, 981,060. And the Regional Day School for the Deaf, 772,218.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. I will entertain a motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Ms. Davis, the item number 10, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding a resolution adopting the tax rate for the 2024 tax year.
Yes, you do have in your package a copy of the resolution to adopt the tax rate. We have, so on this date, we, the Board of Trustees of the Waco Independent School District, hereby levy or set the tax rate on $100 valuation for the district for the tax year 2024 at a total tax rate of $1.048940, to be assessed and collected by the duly specified assessor and collector as follows. .7664 for purpose of maintenance and operations, and .28254 for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debt. This year's levy to fund maintenance and operations expenditures does not exceed last year's maintenance operations levy. The Texas Property Tax Code, Section 26.05B, requires that the following statement be included in the resol, resolution setting this year's tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax assessor-collector for the county of McClintock, Texas, as the tax assessor-collector for the Waco Independent School District is designated by the district. So this be adopted this 22nd day of August, 2024. We need to make the motion in the language that's on the front page of the agenda item, and it must be a record vote.
Is that a roll call vote, just for, okay, great, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.048940, which is effectively a .79% increase in the tax rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillery. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll just go ahead and take a roll call. I don't think there's, oh, yeah, Renee, thank you, never mind. President Cordogic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice President Vedanya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Gillery?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ochoa?
Yes.
And Trustee Patton?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Let's do, let's do Kendrick. We've been talking budgets. Can we see Kendrick first? And he's showing. Can you show us Kendrick? Lighten it up a little bit.
Yeah, just the fun one.
Do the fun. If you guys are you guys okay with that? Sing Kendrick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm Mr. Ford, Dr. Kinkannon. So tonight, we've got a presentation from O'Callaghan Robertson and Built Right Education, Built Right Construction Education Group, BWC, Andrew Snelling and Andrew Faust, on the wonderful Kendrick Elementary School. So I'm gonna let them, I'm not gonna steal any of their thunder, so.
So go on to the next slide. Oh, clicker. Okay, cool. So this is the before picture. This is probably before we're actually mobilizing. This is prior to, I guess, December. This is where we're breaking ground. Actually, go back to that picture. We're looking at dirt work, activities going on. I guess where the existing gym is kind of right next to it there. At one point, it was a twelve-foot hole in the ground as we're building back up the site, kind of going that direction. So a lot of site activity going on that direction. We're starting foundation work. Yeah, starting foundations. I think I pushed the wrong button.
There you go.
We're gonna go back. Maybe. Oh, no. Okay. The foundation work is going on, site utility work's going on, getting into more foundation, more site concrete. Site foundational work's probably about halfway done at this point, getting into, starting to work slabs in this picture. So lower left of your screen, we've got the existing gym, we've got in yellow, the cafeteria, the kitchen. Yellow to the right is Area B, the two-story wing, and then Area A and kind of B in front of the yellow. We have not made it to the two-story classroom wings to the, I guess, upper right next to the gym in that picture. This is completing foundation work, starting structural steel activities, CMU going up in the gym, cafeteria and kitchen areas. And then this is probably ninety-five percent superstructure complete. This is eight-thirteen, so this is about two weeks ago. At this point, actually, in the job, at this this point, we're getting ready to deck out the roof, getting ready to start the roof next week on the gym on the far side and the cafeteria. And we have just poured, I guess, the first of Area E where the dark gray is kind of in the middle of the screen, middle-left. Oh, how do I do the?
Are you able to click the link? It'll bring up a video.
I'm gonna stop quickly.
And as we start this one, I'll kind of orient y'all to where we're going around the building as the drone circles. So right now, you're looking at the two-story classroom wing.
Yeah, kind of E to the left, D to the right, and then E-one behind the.
So as as we circle around, you're coming up to the main entrance, you can kind of see the canopy right in the middle of your screen, and on your left of the main entry is the library, which is a tall volume with some, right, really nice windows. That lower portion to the left of the gym is gonna be your administration area, and then you have your your gym volume there, that's the tallest volume, which, as you recall, was the was an ad alternate that we were able to accept as part of this project. As you circle around, you also have now your cafeteria and your kitchen area, all that CMU is gonna be those areas. Then we have the two-story, starting your two-story classroom addition, which would be your special education, you have your lower grades on the lower floor, or younger grades on the lower floor, and then your older grades on the upper floor. You can see to the right there, the existing separate gym building that we were keeping as part of this project, as well as a, you know, auxiliary gym to use for, you know, recess when the weather is inclement, as well as community events and whatever else might be needed for for the use of that space. If we want to play it again, maybe, just to see it again, and.
You want to run that link one more time?
Andy can kind of talk more about the construction that's ongoing in this moment.
So again, structure at this point is probably about ninety-five percent complete. Most of your superstructure is set. We've still got to set some of the stairs at this point, but we're basically working detail on structural work. As you can see at the classroom wings, we've started exterior sheathing, we're starting kind of our envelope process. Basement is just about complete on the exist or the the new gym, the alternate gym. They've wrapped it around the cafeteria, and we're decking that out now as far as the structure goes.
Yeah, and this video is from about a week or.
Yeah, it's about.
A week and a half ago.
Week plus ago, so.
And there's already quite a bit of progress that's been made just in this last week. You can have all the roof, most of the roof decks on, they're gonna start putting the TPO roof membrane on.
You got all your structural deck on the two-story. All this is concrete poured at this point, we did that last week, and underneath on the first floor, we've got probably seventy-five percent of our our framing in play, and a lot of in-wall and overhead MEP activities going.
They're moving fast over there.
Quick question. Can you refresh our memory? Is the is the parking in the front, is that teacher parking, or is there a separate spot for teacher parking?
Parking lot is what you see there, and that's gonna be.
To the right.
Yeah, to your right, that already is poured. That is gonna be your parent drop-off loop, as well as, you know, guest parking. There is a small strip of parking along the bus loop, which is a separate entrance on the back of the building, so some teachers could park there, but likely some of the teachers would be parking in that front lot as well, just based upon however many teachers are driving. And then that bus loop is a separate whole entity to keep the parent drop-off loop separate from the bus drop-off.
You've also got some additional parking on the Kendrick, where a lot of our roofing is being staged right now, kind of the Hammerhead Fire Lane.
Yep, there's that third entrance in the back where would kitchen deliveries would be to the to the site as well. A few spots there that for kitchen staff or others that would maybe be coming at an early hour.
Good.
I'm really pleased with the way the the existing gym fits on the site with the rest of the building. I was a little worried about that, but it looks great when you pull in. It's it's and it's going to be such an asset to the the campus, they can use it for a lot of things.
And there will be a covered walkway that connects the new building to the existing gym, so students could even get there and implement weather without getting wet.
Sorry, where is the playground gonna fit?
All the playground, there'll be one playground kind of to the left of where the image is now, between where the gym and the existing gym and the and the new buildings are.
So in.
Soccer field in the back-left corner of the site, and additional kind of play structure over in that area, as well as a great large, if you back up the video maybe halfway, the back, there's a big monumental stair right in the center of the campus, and it looks out upon the back of the school, and there'll be a large courtyard area where there'll be seating, where assemblies can be held, and it's gonna be a really, really cool, cool addition to the campus.
Great, thank you. I was like, this is an elementary school, these kids need to play.
So far, they'll be able to play in the dirt as of right now, but eventually, there'll be nice, nice grass there for them.
Any more questions before we head back to the slide? So as mentioned before. On this slide or the next one?
You just go one more.
There we go. As we mentioned before, we've got all our concrete slabs down, both first floor, first floor and second floor structurally, superstructure is set, we're working miscellaneous steel at this point. Exterior framing, sheathing, the envelope activities have commenced at the two-story. We're actually looking to start that on the single story, starting next week. Interior framing in the two-story wing started last week, and like I said, we're about seventy-five percent framed out, working overhead and in-wall MEP. Roofing activities, if you saw on the slide, there's a lot of roofing material on the Kendrick side Fire Lane. Those activities start Monday. Site infrastructure in terms of, I guess, utilities and whatnot, that's about ninety-five percent complete. We've still gotta do some tie-ins with roof drains, that kind of thing. Outside of that, that's that's kind of what we're what we're showing there.
Yeah, you can see in the upper-left photo, you know, that's inside the two-story classrooming. They're already starting to get some of those cold-form metal framing walls up of the classrooms. The drone shot just kind of shows the progress of the gym, kind of what we saw. The upper-right photo is in the cafeteria, so you're looking, the stage would be kind of behind you, that's where all the kids would be sitting eventually. There's gonna be a nice little courtyard, there's some doors out the kind of back right for a nice little kind of courtyard that's enclosed with some breeze block, and there'll be a nice seating area out there. The lower-left is showing you the kind of the front entry and along the gym side there, and then the lower-right photo is gonna be inside the new gym volume. Right now, it looks really well-lit, but that's because the roof's not on yet, so a lot of the lights filtering in.
Yeah.
Won't be quite so light, but we do have the skylights up there, so it brings some good natural light.
That will be the first place we roof on Monday, so it'll get dark quickly.
Yes.
Yes.
That's right.
Let's see. Go back on the other.
Just go to the right, yeah.
Okay. So on this job, we we've introduced, I guess, nano-concrete, and I don't know the a lot of the technical items behind it, but from a, I guess, high-level view of it, you're looking at state-of-the-art kind of innovative technology that we've used here. It was brought to us, I guess, by the district and OCR, higher levels. It's been interesting to work with, kind of giving giving open minds, kind of working with it. It gives it allows us to replace a lot of the cement we're using, a lot of the water that we're using, and with different materials, but it's basically an add mixture going with that. Having said that, the number up on up there is about eighteen thousand gallons, that's what they're estimating that we've saved on the job. But, you know, you think of concrete, you think of cement and water. Well, that's more traditional thinking, but.
Yeah, with with the nano-infuse, so traditionally, you have, you know, your Portland cement and your water, and that mixes together and the forms a chemical reaction that hardens and creates the structures that create the hard concrete, right? We're adding a different add mixture in that basically absorbs water at a nano level that is infused within throughout the entire mix. So as it's getting mixed in the truck, all those nano little particles are sucking up water like little mini sponges. So once we pour it and lay it down on the site, that water is accessible from at all parts of the concrete, instead of traditionally, they're standing out there with a hose and spraying the top of it and hoping that water absorbs down into the concrete that's way below. But this concrete actually is given water from the inside, and so because of that, it hardens faster, it gets harder ultimately than traditional concrete, as well, it doesn't use quite as much water, because when we think about it, when they're spraying water up there, a lot of that water is not being utilized efficiently. This is a very efficient use of all the water that's inserted in the mix. Also, you pay typically for concrete by the weight, and a lot of that weight is water. And so it would actually be a less expensive alternative as well, because the truck comes off, there's less water needed in it. It does react a lot differently, that's where some of the challenges we came into with Built Right, you know, but they were troopers, they did a bunch of different tests at their own expense, at their own facilities, and, you know, did mock-ups of slabs, did mock-ups of tilt panels, and really has been a great partner in this innovative, you know, technology that hasn't really been utilized here in Texas at all. It's it's being utilized a lot out on the West Coast, and it's it's a fairly new technology, but, you know, I think it's really a great opportunity that Built Right has, you know, agreed to partner with the district in just bringing this great technology, which is also sustainable, right? We're all talking about sustainability and wanting to do better for our planet, and so this is an opportunity, and just leading the leading the path, which I think is a great.
For anybody that works with concrete typically, you're watching three-seven day breaks on on your strengths. A lot of times, we're hitting our strengths inside of twenty-four hours.
Yep. It takes like seven days to get the strength you need.
Give you an idea.
Yeah, and we're doing it in a fraction of the time, so that speeds up timelines of of projects as well. So there's a lot of different benefits that this this new technology is bringing to the industry.
Something else that you may like is the use of this is garnering national attention from several different players. So it's a it's the first use of the Sabotage is Eric Kendrick, and like I said, we've had some visitors internationally, but it's definitely garnering national attention.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Guillory.
So strength, chipping, cracking, all those types of things, you didn't, when you when you first introduced it, you didn't look too impressed, and so that's why I'm.
When we first started testing it, there was a lot of skepticism, skepticism looking at it. Once we've kind of learned how to deal with it, it's 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 a little different. I'm not gonna say it doesn't present its challenges, but once you kind of know what you're working with, you have a little trust and faith with the people that are actually used to working with it, then, yeah, a lot of the stuff that we're used to seeing with concrete, you don't see nearly as much.
Yeah, because other campuses have that kind of washed look, concrete look, something discoloration, cracking, chipping, weather resistant, things like that.
With normal concrete, you're dealing with a lot of shrinkage cracking with the stuff we're not seeing a lot of that. It's definitely minimized, is what we're seeing.
Again, that's because that water isn't infused into the mix and is able to get distributed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all the floors in the school will be a deep-grind polished concrete, which is going to be a very, very nice look, and this product lends itself to that look, which are very sustainable, very maintainable, and just beautiful.
So on on the Carver project, when you go and you walk, probably maybe months after you saw discoloration on the floors, staining on the floors, type of finish that you put on top of it, and is it, did you use the same concrete on that campus that you used on this campus?
No, this is a new.
Okay.
A new process that has only been enacted on Kendrick. So the other projects have used just traditional concrete methods, so.
Could you speak to maintenance of this, since it is a new procedure, a new process? Can you speak to how things will be handled when there are cracks or something to that situation?
Well, this is concrete, so, I mean, concrete does crack, we can't, there's not gonna be a zero cracks, but it definitely lends itself to being, giving us the best chance of not having severe cracks. There's always gonna be some of those little fault line cracks here and there, but that's kind of part of the beauty and aesthetic of concrete floors, it's a little more kind of rustic and, you know, industrial, if you will. But maintenance-wise, it is no different than traditional concrete maintaining those floors. I mean, there's there's different actually approaches that can now be used to help correct any deficiencies that do occur throughout the construction process. Basically, they can spray on this add mixture and reactivate the top layer of concrete to make it a slurry again, like a liquid, re-polish that top layer again, and buff out any kind of surface deformities that do occur. So it's it's pretty, it's pretty impressive, it's a very impressive product.
Yeah. It kind of changes the world.
Yep.
I'm curious of how you tested ten years worth of flushing. Eighteen, is that like one toilet flushing?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Well, it was me, and I do.
Any other questions, Mr. Ochoa? No one? Okay, sorry, keep going.
Looking at engagement, what we've done kind of with the community out there, we we've attended the the Family Fest at University High, done that, I guess, the last two years going in a row, so that's that's been fun. We we had a lot of community involvement with the beam signing, that was a very, very successful event from what we're looking for. Top picture is kind of.
Top picture kind of shows us in front of the, front of it, we've got the drone kind of behind the crane, that was actually the last day the crane was there, but looking down back on us from the building side of the beam. And then, of course, the groundbreaking, doing what we had there, and two pictures from there. We've also, one of the things that's not shown on there, I don't have any pictures of it, but prior to most of our major concrete events, you know, concrete gets poured early morning. So prior to those, we've been sending out letters to all the direct neighbors, letting them know that it's going to be, not be bright, but we're going to have light towers, there's going to be noise starting early morning hours, so trying to keep them involved and let them know what's going on. So, no major complaints, we've actually had several people come by and kind of thank us for, for that stuff, but community's been good, we're, we're trying to stay natively on that end.
They not only sent letters, they hand-delivered them to all the neighbors actually in the whole area, so it's, it's meeting the neighbors, it's putting a face to this construction project and really being a part and established in that community, so it's been good. And if, I don't know if you saw in the drone video, that beam was up there in the one corner, so a little Easter egg, re-watch it again later.
Yeah. It will be covered up here in a couple weeks, so. Overall schedule, bottom line here is we're, we're on time, we'll be under budget, we've got aspirations of meeting our goal early, I'm not going to go too far in depth on that, but we get a little bit further in the job, then we'll divulge that a little bit, but we hope for a nice, smooth transition kind of going into the summer, the fall, so...
I was there at the beam signing, and I was so excited, just looking at the, I guess what you call the superstructure, was just really encouraged to see that and just, you could, you could visualize it a little bit more, so really thank you for the, all y'all's work and...
Absolutely.
And your willingness to work with this nanotechnology.
And also, just thank you to, to your folks who've been working out in this incredible heat. Went to the beam signing and I brought my Stanley cup and I was out there for thirty minutes and the top of my, my straw melted. It was hot. So, you, your, your folks have been doing yeoman's work on dealing with the heat and the elements.
Yep. We're, we're working some hours out there with the heat, we're opening up right now about six o'clock, and we've got several trades that are calling today at two, just to try to combat the heat. We've got some that are staying later, but, but yeah.
Went to Lolitas, and Jeremy and his sister went to school at Kendrick, and she lives across the street. Her daughter was at the beam signing, and I walked in today for lunch, and she said, "How's my school doing?" She's actually really proud that it's just coming to life in the neighborhood. Thank you for the way you led there, because I'm happy.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If it is finished early, I won't be the superintendent, but I had, I did tell Gloria, I would love to have it set up and let the community go through it before we move teachers in. So if you have the opportunity to do that in, into April, early May, that would, I think, be really fun for the community to get to celebrate it.
Absolutely, especially since they've been watching it this whole time, so that's great. Okay, well, thank you for all of your work, appreciate it.
I think you too.
Okay, Mrs. Barretta, let's go on to item number eleven. Consider discuss take appropriate action regarding approval, construction change directed number five, Rogers O'Brien Construction Tennis Courts Revision at Waco High School.
Okay, well, this one isn't quite as much fun as the last one, but it's a part of the process, and so, you know, what we're asking for is for the board to authorize the superintendent to execute CCD number five, which will direct the contractor to proceed with the work, and then we can continue working on both the cost and the potential schedule impact that they've brought up as we move forward. The, you know, when, when we originally found out about this issue, the initial cost was one point eight million dollars, and we didn't have one point eight million dollars, and we all know about our budget situation. So, O'Connell Robertson and Rogers O'Brien and Waco ISD got together and figured out, tried to figure out, what can we do to still deliver eight tennis courts and yet not have to spend this much money? So it took a while to figure that out, because while we're figuring that out, a lot of other things are going on, so we're still have construction going forward at a very fast pace, lots of questions going on, and then trying to figure this out. We had multiple meetings with the tennis coach and with Coach Helt, and, and spoke with them about the, you know, what this plan was and what it entailed, and in the end, we ended, I think we ended up with a better solution. I like the layout better than what we had originally, because it preserves the north-south orientation of the tennis courts, which is the better orientation for play. It also, on the new section of the courts, we're able to get fifteen feet between the courts, which is a request to the tennis coach that we did not have in the original. So there were things we were able to do, we also have several more viewing areas for tournaments that spectators can use, and also a dedicated place for the tennis players to be between the courts during a tournament. So with the attention that we put on this, especially Andrew put on this over the last year, we really came up with a good solution that really will have a really nice facility for Waco High School.
Next solution was to put that layer on top of existing tennis courts, is that what I read? Is that my looking at?
So, yeah, we will be resurfacing, repairing, I mean, they're going to take, they're going to take everything off of the existing court, and they will be repairing any damaged areas, and then it will be resurfaced. When we're finished, you will not tell, be able to tell what was new and what was existing. It will all look brand-new, with new fencing, new nets, new everything.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. We're going to get the motion going, and then you can ask more questions. Thank you, Mr. Grant, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Okay, is there any discussion, Mr. Grant, on this? Or questions? Any questions or discussion, Mr. Davis? Any questions or discussion? Any question, any more questions, Mr. Gilli? This is, if you think of one, we'll come back to you. Mr. Ochoa, any questions?
No, I just want to say, but, you know, it's obviously a problem we wish we didn't have, but paying what we're going to pay versus one point eight million, I just appreciate you, the work you've done to get, get any of those, those issues down, we appreciate it.
Any questions, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
I, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? It passes unanimously. Number twelve, consider discuss take appropriate action regarding the approval of change orders number one to Rogers O'Brien Construction for a time extension for Waco High School, Mrs. Barretta.
Yes, so our agreement with Rogers O'Brien requires that any change in the schedule has to come to the board for approval. So in the, in our agreement with them also, they're required to put in a certain number of rain days for every month, and if they exceed those, if there's, those rain days are exceeded and they actually delay the work on the critical path, which means what they have to get done that month, or what they have to get done at that particular time, then they are due a time extension for the day. However, they do not get any, any money associated with that time extension, it's just a day-time extension. So that's what this is about, it's basically truing us up to where we are, so that I think what we are looking at now is May twenty-second for the actual completion, the contractual completion of the work. They're still aiming to get done before that, but the actual contractual completion date will be May twenty-second.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, do you have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vidani?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gilli?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes unanimously. Let's move on to item number eleven, thank you, Mrs. Barretta, for review, discuss district branding and marketing strategy, Ms. Cox and Miss Sled, the dynamic duo.
Anyone who gets to stand next to Wendy Sled, you just, the dynamic just comes, so, woo-hoo! Yeah. Good evening, President Cordewig, Dr. Kincanon, trustees, it's exciting to be here, I did tell Wendy just a moment ago, I've never actually clicked through with the clicker story, so, there we go. We're here tonight to talk about a really exciting project, the district's recent branding and new marketing strategy development efforts. Let's take us back a little bit to the fall of last school year, and planning for that, for the 2023, 2024 school year, several of you, several trustees, requested that the administration develop a new district logo. As a part of that ongoing conversation with Dr. Kincanon...
I think we've got that book ended up here.
Yeah. Part of that ongoing dialogue with Dr. Kincanon, we, we ended with the district improvement plan last year, having goal one, strategy two, that acknowledged your request and incorporated it with our ongoing efforts to change, challenge, and ultimately enhance perceptions of Waco ISD, including a new logo and a, and a new development for the district's brand. So next steps for that, we partnered with an organization called World Design Marketing, a firm with experience in higher education brand development, that was really intriguing to us because of their work in the area with entities like MCC and Hill, Hill College, Hill Community College, with their enrollment marketing. So a real experience with having to draw in, in a competitive atmosphere, people wanting to actually engage with your district and through the process of enrollment. They facilitated a design process in January that included the input from students, staff, parents, board members, and community leaders on what makes Waco ISD not only unique, but really special. And so they asked questions over two days in seven sessions, listening to those diverse audiences about what are the perceptions of Waco ISD currently, and what you would like it to be in the future? Why are we here today? What are, what are you seeing that's different? It was really thoughtful conversations, I appreciate many of you that attended, but through that, through those workshops, they then began to take what themes emerged from that and develop a creative work plan. To them, that creative work plan was an attempt to further distill not only what they heard in our workshops, but the numerous successes and accomplishments and, and those themes that they heard, and use that information to then develop not only the logo or brand that you see, but really the strategy behind how we tell our story a little bit differently, to get that ultimate end result that we want, which is increased enrollment, changing of perceptions, and all the, all the things that go along with that. So after we made progress on both the creative work plan and the brand, I really appreciated everyone's making time in their schedules to come and see a sneak peek. I remember sitting around the, the conference room table upstairs with several of you and getting to show you and let WDM kind of present what they heard about Waco ISD, that was really powerful. You know, hearing it reflected what we all are feeling here in the district and why we know it was time to change the look and the feel of the district's brand, they reflected that to us. So thank you for, for taking time with that, and, and after those sneak peeks, after those sessions around the conference room table, we got to work on planning our implementation for how we were really going to introduce that new story. Reflected in this meaningful new logo, and we won't go back through all the meaning that is in each part, each characteristic, is that new story. It's an exciting time in Waco ISD. Expertly and exuberantly led by our Board of Trustees and administrative team, Waco ISD is strong, we're inspired and passionate. Our award-winning teaching staff and rising-star students are engaged in the pursuit of elevation through education every single day. Our embracing community leaders, acknowledged in the W, and parents are committed and supportive. Simply put, we are a community of learning, led by the heart there in the center, we believe in our students, we believe that they are the heart of the matter, we believe they are all that matters, everything we do, we do for them. We impart wisdom through education, we work daily to ensure student success, and as a result, wonders are unfolding every single day in every single way throughout our twenty-three campuses. The Waco Independent School District story is being retold. Our diversity embraced, our reputation reclaimed, we've come together, one heart, one home.
Ms. Elizabeth shared with you just now photos from those reveal celebrations. We started internally with our staff, because that's where our investment is, that's who teachers are children in this, who brings us continued enrollment by building up those students, building up those accountability ratings, building up the confidence in those students. So we began rolling out our brand with our staff, and I will tell you, if you haven't looked at some of the pictures on our social media, they love this brand, and shout-out to you guys that are wearing it tonight, because they are wearing it, they love this new brand. But we started those reveal celebrations here for the, those that served on those branding committees, and then the next day, August one, everything hit. We rolled it out to our campuses, our billboards hit, our movie ads hit, our digital marketing hit, we all began to roll it out, and our website hit. As you all know, our web company was bought out, and we were being forced to migrate, whether we wanted to or not, that was not a choice, okay? But we timed it and worked literally, and I want to give a shout-out to Michael Anderson, our district webmaster, who, there's three thousand-plus pages on our website, and so it will take us a while to get to all of them, but all those pages had to be rebuilt, it was like going from Microsoft two thousand seven to twenty-ten. Everything's on there, but it may not be in the right place. Or it didn't migrate at all, right? Because it was a different way that it was put in, the code was different, et cetera, so shout-out to Michael, who worked diligently around the clock to make sure all those campus landing pages were ready, the department landing pages were ready, et cetera. We will continue to touch those pages over the next year, it's going to take us a while to do all that, but we have a form on there where you can tell us where they are and we'll get that fixed, but he did an incredible job. And with that digital transition, also came our digital marketing, which is social media, content marketing, email marketing, mobile marketing, search engine optimization, I encourage you to do a search for Waco ISD schools, and you'll see us right at the top now. Okay, so we're the first ones that folks can click on. A pay-per-click campaign, so we know where folks are going, are our ads working, how are we measuring that? And then, of course, our website monitoring, if you've logged on to our website, it'll tell you we're now using cookies and we're tracking that. So that's very important to see where folks are going and what they're looking for, how do we meet their need if we don't know what they're searching for? And then phasing out our previous logo, which will also take some time as we respect our budget constraints that we're under. Our whole goal is changing perceptions, right? Making people want to come to Waco ISD, making us the first choice, the first one that comes to mind when they say, "Hey, I'm new to town, I want to enroll my kid." I know you all know that we have an extremely high mobility rate in this district, it's more than three times the state average, it's like being a military town almost, there's always a new influx of people coming in, and Waco is growing rapidly. So us being top of mind is key. We have started changing it with our in-district branding, you'll start seeing the decals on the cars coming out, and we're putting all of that together, we're running ads in Spanish and in English on our billboards, we've got three up in the community, you've probably seen them on Loop three forty in Beverly, Lake Air Drive, and Tennyson, and South I thirty-five and twenty-two. And I want to tell you a story about Nyla Gonzalez's mother. She calls us, she's talking so quickly, and some, she was switching back and forth between English and Spanish, she was very excited that I had to hand her off to someone that understood the Spanish part, she saw her daughter Nyla on a billboard on her way to work, and she was, said, "My daughter, a star." She was so excited to see that, and so she asked if she could have a picture of that child on the billboard, and of course, she took it, I sent it to Dr. Kincanon, I think she must have been hanging out of her window, because it was a little whopper jawed like this, but she was beyond excited, and just, that's what it's all about, right? She recognized her kid, and she said, "My whole family thinks she's a star, she is a model," you know, and they recognize their own children, like the ones that you see on the screen before you now. And so it's the kids like Nyla that make this so important, that proud to come to Waco ISD, she was so excited that telling you about it now, I get excited... She was so excited that telling you about it now, I get excited as well. But I do want to share with you that we are tracking the weekly impressions on these billboards, and I can give you all of that if you want those numbers. But we are watching this to see what is and is not working. We're running targeted digital ads in both English and in Spanish. And I will tell you that our click-through rate, which means when they see it, they're actually clicking, saying, you'll learn more. Remember, we saw what those ads looked like, so it says, learn more. They're actually clicking through at .31%. And you say, huh, is that good? It's totally excellent because the average is .08%. So, our ads are working. Enrollment's up. Dr. Kinkanen told you that. Just wait until six months from now, okay? So, I just think that those kinds of things where we're watching that click-through rate and we're seeing that our ads are working and showing our own kids and staff, which are in the ads as well, really makes a difference. We're starting out with that and rolling that because those digital ads, as I talked about what digital marketing was, includes some social media. So, we'll be rolling out a little bit more of that as we move through this campaign. But I think one of our other big things was running our movie theater ads. If you've been to the movie lately, you've seen our ads. Blockbuster summer, right? It's always a time to go to the movies in the summer. You know that we have received almost 100,000 impressions on our movie ads. So, we're running at two theaters, 30-second spots, so we run twice. We run once in the lobby, so we've got you captive at the concession stand line or the ticket line. And then, when you're in the movie theater, they're running on every screen as well. So, that's been, I think, very favorable for us. A lot of people have said, hey, I saw the billboard, or hey, I saw you at the movie theater. So, that's really great, and I think too, it affects all ages, right? Depending on what age they are and what movie that they're going to. And then, of course, reaching out to the business community, doing that with local publications like the Waco one and the Chamber, and then we are tracking on our website as we talked about. I want to add that this is in addition to the efforts that our communications department already does with social media and outreach and things like that. So, this is definitely a combined effort, but it takes it to a whole new level with Just want to share with you a little bit about continuing the momentum. We've made that investment in WDM and putting this brand together, and this is not just a logo. This is a brand change. This is a mindset change. This is a habit change that we're going through. So, it's more than just changing the way that we look on the outside. We talked about our high mobility rate and it being three times the state average. You may or may not know that more than 1,000 students were classified as homeless last year in Waco ISD and were served. In the first two days, we'd already identified 50 homeless children that came to us and said, we need, we need this to be successful academically and personally. And so, that is another reason to continue our advertising. And I think just strengthening our identity as someone that came to Waco and had not worked in the Waco area before, I didn't really know who Waco was, to be honest with you. And so, this really gets to the core mission of who we are, and that's really the story we have to tell because one of the reasons we rolled it out was to have is because we're all storytellers. So, we have to make our staff believe and then the community believe so that we're all sharing the same message. And that brings us to maintaining the morale of our staff. As I shared, they love wearing that brand, and they're eager and happy to talk about Waco ISD, and they're excited, and it's the start of school, and we're starting off fresh, and we're starting off new, and we want to be able to contain that. We want their buy-in so that they're telling our story. They're telling the Nyla stories. And then, I know you all know this, but a person has to see something on average seven times before they start retaining it, especially in a world like today where we're bombarded constantly with information and trying to retain that. So, that's another reason to build that familiarity with Waco ISD, build our credibility, foster trust with our community and our families. And then, of course, our ultimate goal is to influence behavior so that they're enrolling their children. And then, I listed up there, keeping up with the Joneses. I know you know you don't advertise out of sight, out of mind, and so it's a matter of keeping in front of your audience. You know, when you see the Baylor billboards up everywhere, I mean, Baylor lives here, we know who they are. But the point is, is that they are bigger than life. They are out there. You know they're there, and it's a constant reminder of who they are and what they are. And then, we had a heavy lift to do this when we invested in the marketing company and made our original, you know, rollout and this original introduction of our new brand. So, what's our return on investment? Part of that is, is that we lose that heavy lift and what we invested if we don't continue to do, to move forward and continue to advertise. Studies show that within four months, 79% of people forget what they had seen four months earlier, even if they saw it repeatedly. So, it's important to keep putting yourself out in front of them. I think it's also important to say that we're working more cohesively as a team in Waco ISD, so you'll see consolidated efforts there on the slide because our branding will also include the marketing efforts and things that Human Resources does. We're now collaborating on that. You know, they advertise annually for teachers with billboards and other avenues that they're working through, and so we're already working on that together. So, this will be one big branding campaign for the entire district, HR, communications, anyone that needs that assistance. We are targeting our audience through geo-fencing, meaning they are in our zip code area, so that we are targeting them, and we can reach outside of that. When we start marketing with Human Resources, we'll discuss with them where they have found the most success, and if that means we're hitting a Dallas zip code with some of our billboards and things like that, then we will definitely do that. We also want professional referrals. We want the business community to believe in us too. We want that real estate agent, when they're showing that house, to say, yeah, Waco ISD is where you want to send your kid. They are diverse, they are strong, and they are committed. And so, we have to win over that business community, and it starts with the new brand. And then, we talked about how we're measuring how successful we are. How many click-throughs are we getting? What's the return on our investment? What's it costing us to acquire a student? Those kinds of things. So, what's the bang for our buck? How many visits to our website? So, there is a measured strategy that we have in place. And finally, any questions?
Any questions?
No questions. I just wanted to say, you're a whiz, Wendy.
Whiz isn't even the word. I mean, like, incredible. Wonder whiz, yeah.
No, you do a wonderful job, and I always appreciate your work and what you brought to the district since you've been here. So, thank you very much.
I have great support, so. And it's a team. I tell you, like, we talked about Michael Anderson knocking out that website, and Quinta Robinson has really taken on Parent Square as our champion. I mean, I just, I can't do it all, and so I'm really blessed with an amazing team.
I'm also saying, you know, this is going to be a special year, so buckle up. Get ready to push.
I'm ready.
She doesn't stop. She doesn't stop.
Mr....
The board was, we get rid of the logo. Hated, hated, hated the logo. I just wanted to note, it's days after our logo was unveiled, our enrollment numbers were significantly reduced. Joking. I think, to me, this is way more than a logo. This is about telling a story. We have a beautiful story to tell. But you, and the way that your teams have unveiled it, it's done that.
Thank you.
It takes a crap. And so, I encourage you to keep getting that in front of your people, in the billboards, and making parents proud. Because it works. I mean, it works. And I think if we can all tell a positive story and have positive experiences first, we will see, we will see return on investment.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I would be curious to know what the acquisition cost for a student is, but you can send that to me at any time.
I don't have that yet. We haven't even been 30 minutes, 30 days in the campaign, but I will have.
Okay. Secondly, I just want, I want to mention this. We went to see Temple of Doom this weekend, and I had to run to the restroom before the movie started and had to do a double take around me because Dr. Kinkanen was doing a commercial over the PA system for Waco ISD.
Yes, I know. If you're in the bathroom, you can't get away. It's still in the bathroom on the speaker.
I actually didn't know the ads were running at the theaters, and so I'm at a restaurant, and the waiter says, I saw them, I saw the ad, the commercial. He called it a commercial. I saw the commercial, and I went, what commercial? And I went, oh, okay, I know what you're talking about now. That's funny. Same movie, too.
Also, I think we should probably change the minutes from, from several of you have expressed a need to rebrand to you singular have expressed several times the need to rebrand. Because it was, it came from a few specific people. But I'm going to be Jim here for a minute and take up a little time. So, you've heard me tell this story. When I started teaching, and I was at University High School, I was speaking to some old friends of mine that I used to work with at the bank, and they would, they said, where are you teaching? And I would say, University High School, and I would get that, that look of like, ooh, like, what's that like? And I fiercely defended our kids because, you know, it was me telling them, first of all, you don't know anything about the students that we work with and the teachers that we work with and the people that I work with. And I think it's similar here. Trustee Patton and I were talking after this rolled out, and some people in the community had some opinions about the logo and several other things. And I personally think that if we allow those in the community who have negative opinions about this logo, we are really doing, if we allow them to have those opinions without explaining to them what it means, we are really doing a disservice to our students and our teachers and our community members and everyone that sat in those meetings and gave input about what the district is and for us. So, I hope that we, I hope that we are seeking people who see this and may be confused by it and don't know what it represents, and I hope we all take the opportunity to explain that clearly too. Thanks.
I just want to say thank you. The website is incredible. I know that you still have to do lots of work or whatever, but it just is so much easier. It looks not as cluttered. It's so much easier to find things that you need. And I, Kinkanen leaned over, and she was like, this was also a big heavy lift. And I'm like, this was huge, huge. Just to see your attention to detail in the marketing, being able to pinpoint and really kind of target specific audiences and track that data is huge. I think I love Parent Square. I asked Kinkanen, okay, Parent Square, where did this come from? And just have heard many positive, unsolicited just remarks about it and how wonderful it is. So, I just, I really want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is you and your team. This is excellent work. Excellent work, and it's on behalf of our kids, and so I can't say thank you enough for this.
I also say one thing that I really like, besides I like to, we got rid of that flying mortarboard. I really like the light pole signs. I think that looks so cool. It would be neat if we could possibly have one at every school hanging on, I don't know, a pole.
That is a goal. That's one of our, we snuck that in on one of the pictures. We have some things that we want to do. We just, because of budget constraints, we're not able to do that. We have priced that out, so we are moving hopefully in that direction.
Cheryl said that she could cover it. She, she looked at me, she went, oh, no problem.
I mean, there are, there are some things on our wish list that we would like to do. I do want to say, though, that one of the things that I'm most proud of, and I think for me, it's probably also new territory, but the way that we're reaching our Hispanic audience. I did not have that in my previous district. We were right next to the World's Artist Military Base, so we had some of everything. But we are, that is our strongest population in our school district, and the number of click-throughs and the number of things that they're going to look at tells us that our Spanish ads are reaching them. And our young lady in the front, our new receptionist, Valeria, translated all of those for all of our ads, so she is biliterate. And so, that's another member of our team to give a shout out to because it's really been a team effort. But we agree with you with those pole banners. We've priced those out, so it may be a few at a time, you know, that we're able to do that, but that is a goal that we have. So, I do want to leave you with this, and I know you've heard it before, so please feel free to chant along with me if you'd like. We believe in our children, we believe in our community, and we believe wisdom works wonders.
If I could add one last thing on Parent Square, I don't know who came up with that idea. It is brilliant. I've got two kids in high school and one in junior high, one in elementary, and the teachers are really good at sending information home, but that information making it from their backpack to us is, I don't know what happens there. But I'm getting notifications that tomorrow is College Day at Waco High tomorrow, and it's just fantastic for a parent, yeah, like us.
And I am glad to see that, and I know you know this because you see it on your Parent Square messages, but our branding is on your Parent Square messages too because Parent Square has the ability to brand for every campus and the district. So, we've only scratched the surface with Parent Square. That's actually going to save us money in the long run. There are several products that we're going to be able to discard after this year because Parent Square can do that. But we take the bite of an elephant one bite at a time, and then we'll, you know, progress through those other areas through the year. But yeah, we've heard a lot of positive feedback on Parents.
Another thing, I was thinking, just the swatting incident we had at Waco High a few years ago, there was just so much bad information being circulated. It would have been really nice to communicate easily, clearly with that app. So, great job.
Trustee, you mentioned who, where did it come from? And so, Dr. Kinkanen keeps a constant running list for our leadership team as she's planning the next year's work. And even with her announcement and the thing she was thinking about for herself, she had that list for the next school year. So, credit to her for continuing to cast that vision. And then, there was, there did come a point when we were, you know, in between and looking at those big lifts and getting them across the finish line, that we looked at Wendy and said, it's up to you. Do you think we can go? And I think Jerry was in that conversation too, and both of them were like, let's do it. So, I know we're still, it'll be great for teachers and campus staff to hear that you like it because we did move their cheese quite a bit.
It was a lot of work.
And we're still trying to work through, right? Everyone learning that new tool, so it will be optimized, so every teacher will want to use it, and then so we can start cutting other software contracts and things like that.
Well, if you need the Ochoas for any commercials or public announcements, you let us know.
I see a movie theater ad.
I actually heard about it at an event I was invited to with the Texas Association of Latin School Administrators. Actually, Mr. Duran invited me to participate, so I went down and gave feedback to vendors. And this was the one thing that I picked up on, and I sat in session for a little while and watched a demonstration of it and came back and said, we're doing that. And I didn't do any of the work. They did the work. So, thank you for doing that work. And I would note that Transformation Waco was already using Parent Square. So, they're ahead of the game, and Lindsay Hilton over at Alta Vista has actually been our tutor for a lot of things, keeping, you know, just helping us troubleshoot, but...
Our cheerleader, our campus cheerleader.
Well, make sure you leave that list on your desk.
I've got a list for you. Yes, I do. Yeah, thank you.
I definitely want to say thank you to both you ladies, and I also want to say thank you to Jerry. I know you guys have coordinated with your departments, and this is fantastic, and it coincides perfectly with opening of new buildings. I think it's important that we brush up our image, and this is a great way to start. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Review discussed versus reading board policy, EFA, local instructional materials, EFB, local library materials. Dr. Cordblum?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kinkanen, and trustee members. So, House Bill 900, which came out of the 88th legislature, requires the Texas State Library Archives Commission with approval from ESPEC to adopt standards for creating library collections in public schools. So, prior to House Bill 900, we had one policy that was, that kind of put curriculum and library materials all together, and that was our EF Local. This bill separates the two, and so now we have... And so now we have EF a local, which is instructional materials. It's very much the same as EF local was about adopting instructional materials when we go textbooks adoptions and all those things, how we take those and let folks preview them and then bring them to you for approval and all of that. EFB local now though, is the library policy. And so they've added some things to it to kind of ensure clarity. And so basically, the new policy covers the collection development, like I said, also access to the district's library materials. So how people, parents can access those materials and different things like that. So there's guidelines there. Parental involvement, so the involvement that parents have and the feedback that they can give in creating library collections. And then also the reconsideration of library materials. We already had a policy for that. That was a part of EF local before. And that is actually a policy that can be used to, if you want to reconsider curriculum materials or library books, but it both works the same way. And then from there, that process would start with the principal. That's all the same. And then if that couldn't be resolved at the campus level, then the parent or employee would follow our normal grievance process that falls back on that, that we use for all grievances. And so basically, that's it. Our next work is then to create administrative guidelines for us to be able to carry out EFB local. So we can develop the processes for creating our library collections and all of that. So this is just the first reading. So we want to make you aware of it. Look over it if you have any questions between now and our September meeting. Then feel free to reach out and I can clarify if needed. Any questions now?
Any questions?
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cornblum. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to announcements. Ms. Cox.
Good evening again. All sports are here. Football season is finally here. We're missing Coach Love because tonight, both the Lions and the Trojans took the field for a scrimmage competition. Waco High is here. UHS was in Flugerville. Next week is Week One of Friday Night Lights. Our Waco High Lions will be traveling to Granbury. University High Trojans will be in action at Waco ISD Stadium versus Keller Central. Kickoff for both games is 7:00 PM. As we prepare to enjoy this season at Waco ISD Stadium, want to make sure everyone and all fans are aware, tickets are still available online. Please get your tickets in advance. And the clear bag policy and other sorts of safety measures will be in place. Stay tuned on hopefully Parent Square and other places where our campuses will be putting out information as well as the district about those security measures. Volleyball is also underway with district kicking off for both of the high schools next month. I was talking with Coach Love this afternoon. He told me, think of volleyball like you do basketball. They have a lot of games and tournaments and things like that that they're involved in before they get to that exciting district play at the end of September. Those volleyball games are on Tuesdays and Fridays. Additional information and team schedules, even our middle school team schedules, some of them are available on the athletics website. Before we forget, the Labor Day holiday is just around the corner. The district and all campuses will be closed Monday, September 2nd, in observance of Labor Day. Something else I want to put on everyone's radar is something Cheryl mentioned in her presentation. Coming up on August 30th, the back-to-school classroom supply allowances, sign-on bonuses, and behavior boot camp payments that are all part of the way we have very wisely invested our S R dollars and given back to our staff will be going out. That's August 30th for those. That will include more than 948 teachers receiving that $300 back-to-school supply allowance. Sign-on bonuses for this year total nearly $765,000. Those are still going out on August 30th. We have 129 fully certified teachers, seven counselors, 14 police officers, and five registered nurses receiving that sign-on bonus. Pause there for a second. That next distribution is on September 13th of approximately 1.8 million in retention bonuses. That final payment of retention bonuses that the board authorized will be paid out to our auxiliary employees, paraprofessionals, campus and district administrative and professional staff. Want to reiterate all of that to thank you all for generously supporting those bonuses and payments for our hardworking employees. We know they are grateful. We know it means a lot to them. Something else worth noting is that our local economy should feel a boost of, from all of that, of approximately $5 million. That's money going back into the city of Waco and McLennan County, thanks to our employees having that money in their bank accounts. So special shout out to Human Resources, Finance and Payroll Departments for the incredible heavy lift and behind-the-scenes work that make that possible. We authorize it here. We dream up these plans, right, Dr. Kinkannon? It takes a lot of people to actually make that happen and get it distributed and handed out to staff. So I wanted to make sure you had all of those data points coming up. The next two weeks, there are several special meetings on your calendars. Our next special meeting here in this room is currently scheduled for Thursday, September 12th at 6:00 PM. And then our next regular board meeting is the following week on September 19th.
Okay, great.
Have we run that fact by the city council?
Be happy to. I don't know that I have yet.
It'd be good for them to know.
The $5 million into the city, invested into our employees? That'd be great.
Yeah, we can share that.
We may need to ask them a favor down the road.
I like that.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Lots of exciting things. The Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 8:17. This time pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551, Sections .074 Okay, great. And this meeting is closed at 8:57.